State Board underscore NC. And you can follow the meeting online and see all of our materials by going to the SBE Meetings tab at www.ncpublicschools.org. For our visitors and those listening online, today's agenda involves our board committee sessions, and tomorrow's agenda is the official meeting when the board will vote on its action We gather today for this meeting, a week after the senseless killing of innocent children and teachers at an elementary school in Uvalde, Texas. Our hearts are overwhelmed with equal parts sadness and anger. How much longer will we endure the massacre of our children and their teachers? How long will we blame each other while we continue to deny our children a safe school, neighborhood, or home? And deny them the chance to graduate, have their own children? While we continue the gridlocked debate that fails to show how much we value and love our children? This has become an all-too regular occurrence in our society. March the 24th marked the 27th school shooting this year. There have been 212 mass shootings in our nation so far this year. With more to come, all while we cast blame instead of working together to solve this horrendous problem. Truth be told, we all bear some responsibility. Because it's something on which we have failed to come together as a society to address. And we let our leaders use the issue to stir our political passions against each other, rather than work together to solve the problem. In the meantime, our children are suffering way too much. We must find within ourselves the courage and the wisdom to come together to work for meaningful solutions to the multi-headed beast of gun violence. And inadequate care for those with mental illness. And the rage pulsing through the veins of too many of us, including too many young men. We must find the courage to challenge ourselves and our leaders to value the safety and lives of our children and their educators above all else. And to resist the easy path of using these tragedies to divide us for the sake of political When do we, as a people, undertake the real work? The proper balance between individual rights and our children's rights to live and to enjoy school? Without the shadow of another school shooting continuing to hang over them? Nothing, absolutely nothing is as important as our children. And it's past time that we, as adults, discipline ourselves to show our children how much we love them. Their lives depend on our self-restraint, our self-discipline, our renewed attention to the needs of our students and educators, and our immediate action to pursue all avenues to make our children and their educators safe. Vice Chair Duncan?
Thank you Chair Davis. As we reflect on this tragedy, we mourn first and foremost the loss of these precious children. All of us have looked at some of this coverage of these children and their families, and it's just heartbreaking, is not the right word. It's even worse than that. It's so extraordinarily difficult for all of us. One of the things that we often talk about is we laud the bravery of the first responders who go into these very difficult situations. And although there's been some criticism in this particular instance, in this instance there's no denying the first responders who ultimately went in to disarm this assailant were extraordinarily brave and courageous in their work, and that should not be overlooked. So we do hold a great debt to our first responders. But we also need to take a step back and recognize who the true first responders are. It's our educators. It's our educators who have died in large numbers during the course of these various school shootings. Since Columbine, 29 educators have been killed in their classroom. Five of those were for domestic disputes. Those domestic disputes were always on female teachers, which is another story about our society. All were female. The other 24 were in the midst of school shootings where children were lost. In every one of these 24 instances, there was extraordinarily bravery by unarmed educators, principals, and teachers alike. Who first and foremost went to defend their children. Did everything they could to protect their children under the circumstances. And these circumstances are horrific, and no matter how much one may prepare, you certainly don't expect to be looking at the other end of a rifle. But that's what happened. And that's what happens all too often, regrettably. But we need to lift up and give great thanks to our educators. If we reflect back for a moment, even before we got to the pandemic, the list of things educators were being asked to do has expanded significantly over the years. Anything for more reports that must be turned in to state levels, to more reports at a local level, to more demands from parents who are taking an interest in their children's education. To a number of criticisms that are made publicly that are often not based in fact, but rather based in perception or based in some other motive. That do not lift up our educators and our teachers the way that they should be lifted up. That has only heightened during the last two years with the pandemic. We've had more and more criticism, unfairly so, of teachers who have been working on desperately difficult situations and trying to reach out for our children because they care about our children deeply. They deserve our support. They don't deserve more criticism. They don't deserve some of the other kinds of diatribes that have been thrown their way. Many of us, many of us, revere, and I do mean revere educators. And we should. And we should show it, and we should act it out, and we should recognize the true first responders in this instance, who are teachers. 24 of them in the last 20-some years, who have made the ultimate sacrifice protecting their children. And I'd say their children with a purpose, not their biological children, their children, our children. All of these children are our children. I appreciate Chair Davis's remarks. I believe we need to increase our resolve to put our educators first and foremost in our minds, only exceeded by the welfare of our children. And they would be the first to say that. But we need to lift up our educators. We need to support them. We need to make this a profession where people really want to do it, because it can make the biggest difference in someone's life of any profession that I know of. None of us can sit here and not think about the impressions some educators made on us that formed who we are today. We need to do all we can to protect them, to make their lives better. And I look forward to a meaningful discussion that needs to follow, not just in our state, but in all states. And our state is far from immune. No state is immune. That we lift up our educators for what they're doing, first and foremost, and then we work harder for how it is we're going to protect, protect our precious children. We'll end where we should, which is, we love our children, they are all our children, and we need to do better by them.
Thank you Vice Chair Duncan. And now let us all pause and quiet our minds to give homage and reverence to the students, educators, family members, and community members, as they continue to work through the aftermath of this, of these horrific events. In addition, we want to acknowledge Memorial Day, which is one of the occasions where we celebrate the blessings of living in a great, free country. And expressing our gratitude to those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, so that we can stand together as united as Americans. May that spirit of self-sacrifice for each other, putting others above ourselves, carry on in each one of us, as we work together on behalf of our students this day and the days ahead. In addition, June is typically the last month of the school year for traditional calendar schools and preparations for the opening of our alternate scheduled schools. So our best wishes to all students and teachers this month, as they close out or begin a new year. We'll recognize several of our State Board of Education advisors during this meeting. Their attentiveness to agenda items, their thoughtful and impactful advice, and their helpful and supportive feedback regarding the education of our students across the state is invaluable. And tomorrow, we'll be recognizing our student advisor, teacher advisor, and our principal advisor who will be leaving us. But today, we get a jump start on those celebrations, as we extend our congratulations to the high school students who are graduating or have graduated, and will begin the next phase in their educational journey or career. And to begin those congratulations, I'd like to recognize Mr. Bryce Wamboldt, our student, our senior student advisor, and give him an opportunity to share some comments with us regarding his experience and future plans. Bryce?
Good morning. As sad as it is to say that the current is closing on my tenure as a student advisor, but as I say, all good things must come in. Over the past two years, I've taken my role as a student to a new level. I am now a lifelong learner of inequities. The State Board of Education exemplified how making North Carolina a more equitable place to learn. Inspired by the state boards' work, I started asking questions at my own high school, Cleveland, as the best way to fix problems is fix them at home. I inquired why certain courses weren't available at my high school, but offered at Clayton Marcellus High School, just 8.7 miles away. Why Johnson Community College denied younger students the opportunity to take courses, but community colleges like AB Tech encouraged learning. And more importantly, how to enable all students to have access to all the opportunities North Carolina Public School System has and offer. As I have been able to reap the benefits of the opportunities offered. Being able to navigate the waters has allowed me to put myself in position for success at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, where I plan to study biomedical engineering. And on behalf of all students, thank you for your work as a state board, because it really means a lot. We've really seen improvements, et cetera. Having more courses offered, the virtual public school system continually giving more opportunities. I know classmates that have just had opportunities that they otherwise would not have had without virtual public schools. I know personally, I wouldn't be able to take some courses without myself, without CCP courses, all those courses. So on behalf of all students, I'd like to thank you, the State Board, and thank my counselors, and thank my principal, and thank my superintendent, Dr. Bracy, who has really encouraged the, um, just the foresight of like, searching for opportunities, et cetera. And I really think that we're not there yet, but we're getting there. And lily pad by lily pad, we come on getting closer and closer to success. So thank you.
Well Bryce, thank you so much for your comments, but even more for your presence with us and the thoughts and reflections that you've shared with us, and the opportunity to serve you and your classmates and your colleagues in our public schools. You're a shining example of the best of North Carolina, and we look forward to following your future as you go forward. So we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Could you come forward for a quick picture? Colleagues? Board members are reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. Does any member of this board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record, and if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the chair. It will then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. Colleagues, you've seen the agenda for over a week and had the opportunity to review it. I ask if there are any requests for changes to the agenda. Hearing done, I request a motion for approval of the June 1st and 2nd State Board of Education Agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Camnitz, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blackburn. Dr. Petrie Martin, we call the roll to capture the vote.
Dr. Oxendine.
Yes.
Ms. Camnitz.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Dr. Tipton Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Mr. Blackburn.
Yes.
Mr. Ford. Treasurer Falwell. Lieutenant Governor Robinson. Vice Chair Duncan.
Yes.
And Chair Davis.
Yes. Motion carries, we have an agenda. We'll now proceed to our committee meetings, and we'll begin with the Student Learning and Achievement Committee chaired by Ms. Jill Camnitz. Ms. Camnitz?
Thank you Chair Davis. I have the pleasure of working with my colleague, Dr. Olivia Oxendine, in this committee. And today, we have, for us, a fairly short agenda. We'll begin with several items of new business, the first being the North Carolina Early Learning Inventory Interpretation Panel update.
Good morning Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, board members, stakeholders, and advisors. I would like to present the results of the North Carolina Early Learning Inventory Interpretation Panels. State Board Policy KNEC-017 provides for the convening of a diverse group of stakeholders to review the North Carolina Early Learning Inventory data, and help determine the data elements that would be populated into the state's longitudinal data system. The results will also be used to calculate the incoming readiness indicator on the school report cards. Dr. Rich Lambert and PhD candidate Kristin Villanueva from UNC Charlotte's Center for Educational Measurement and Evaluation conducted the interpretation panels. And we have Dr. Rich Lambert via WebEx, I believe, today to present the results. Kristin Villanova wanted to be here, however, her daughter is graduating from kindergarten this morning. So Dr. Lambert was gracious to offer to do that for her. Dr. Lambert, are you?
I am, yes. Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for the opening comments. I'm a survivor of a school shooting myself, and I often think about the, excuse me, the people that literally gave their lives to save people like me. So it's quite a difficult time sometimes when these things happen. People like me sometimes have a little bit of you that relives the moment, if you will. So again, I appreciate on behalf of educators around our state, the opening comments. We can go to the next slide. Yeah, okay, so just, Dan gave a quick overview of what Eli is, and I'll just add a few points to that. Just to remind you that the purpose of this, part of the purpose of using the Early Learning Inventory is to give teachers, kindergarten teachers, information that they can use to individualize instruction, to understand the strengths and areas for more needed support for individual children. But the data is also used to populate the longitudinal data system, and it can be aggregated to both the school and district level for various purposes, one of which is supplying some data to the North Carolina School Report Card. We can go to the next slide. So what is a standard-setting study? That's what we did in the interpretation panel process. And the idea is to generate a scale score that captures the performance of children across a variety of performance levels in a general sense. Performance standard is defined as the minimally adequate level of performance for a specific purpose. And in our case, of course, that's to determine school readiness. And a standard-setting process or an interpretation panel process is a way of establishing cut scores to aid in the interpretation of those scores, and doing so with the support and the input and the advice from a broad and diverse panel of experts. So we can go to the next slide. So we used a couple of standard methods for doing this. We use what's called the Item Descripter Matching Method, and we used what's called the Modified Angoff Method. I don't need to go into the details of those, but they're standard methods that states all around the country use. A couple of other things that I should define for you as we go through these slides, performance level descriptors. What those mean is there's often like a list of behavioral anchors or information in a standards document that describes for teachers what are the skills and abilities and knowledge that children need in order to be meeting a required performance level. And what we mean by subject matter experts, you'll see on the next slide, who we use, are people that are uniquely positioned to provide input into the standard-setting or interpretation panel process. So for us, we had 45 contributors that came from all eight regions of North Carolina. On average, they had 23 years of experience in the field, so we had a very rich set of experienced folks. In the pie chart on the left, you can see they came from a variety of places. Thirty-five percent were kindergarten teachers, but we also had some preschool teachers, NC pre-K teachers, we had administrators, principals, an office of early learning staff, and some subject matter experts, you know, experts in early childhood education or child development from institutions of higher learning around North Carolina. On the right, you can see that most of them had master's degrees, but there were some with doctorates and some with bachelor's degrees and other graduate work. Go to the next one. So what is the Item Descripter Matching Method? Well, for this, we had five panels of experts. Those 45 folks were actually split across six different panels. The first five panels focused on the five learning domains that are covered by the North Carolina ELINE. And the subject matter experts were asked to provide their input about where they think children should be functioning around the 60th day of instruction, if they're typically developing children on track to meet the kindergarten standard course of study standards by the end of kindergarten. And we gave these panelists two important resource documents from our state. They had the standard course of study for kindergarten, of course, to reference, and those are the standards for where we expect children to be at the end of the kindergarten year. And they had the North Carolina Foundations for Early Learning Development, which is our state's standards for where we expect children to be at the end of the four-year-old year. And so they can reference both of these documents. Their judgment was to kind of think about that 60th day of the kindergarten year for children that we would expect to meet the kindergarten standard course of study standards by the end of kindergarten. So we can go to the next slide. So this is an example of one of the developmental progressions or items from ELINE. You can see there's different levels, all the way from not yet on the left, meaning the child's really not demonstrating any of those skills or abilities, all the way up to the beyond level, which is 13, which indicates third grade or even higher performance. The advantage of these kinds of progressions for our kindergarten teachers is they could have places to place children who are still developing some of the skills, and also places to place children who are more advanced or gifted. What the green line that we've drawn on there is indicating is something about the task we asked the panels to do. We asked them to set kind of a cut score where they expect kind of the boundary between children that are still developing that skill and children that are demonstrating or beyond the skill level that we would expect at the 60th day of instruction. So this is just an example where they set that cut on one of the progressions. We can go to the next one. I won't go through all these details, but this is a table that you can refer to later if you're interested in more of the details. This is showing the ranges of steps on the progressions, each of the 14 progressions. And our panelists recommended for the demonstrating where we would expect the typically built and kindergarten are to be, who's ready for kindergarten. And so they, in some cases, you know, set a range of maybe three, two, one steps on the progressions that represent kind of the range of where we would expect children demonstrating the skills to be. Can go to the next slide. So I won't read all these results to you, but I have just some examples of, we then took the recommendations from the panel, from each of the panels, and applied them to the 14 progressions to see what does that tell us about North Carolina incoming kindergartners. So you can see in the upper left of this slide, this is one of the social-emotional-oriented progressions about managing feelings or emotions. But it's roughly an 80/20 split, 80% of children were rated by their kindergarten teacher as either demonstrating or beyond this skill, but there's still that 19.5% that are still developing the skill. And then if we go, just as another example, to the lower right, you can see this is about a 2/3, 1/3 split. This is solving social problems or the type of social skills. You can see that about 2/3 of the children were rated by their kindergarten teacher as being demonstrating those skills or even beyond those skills, but still, a little bit more than 1/3 are still developing the skills. So we can go to the next slide. And then this slide is showing similar results, applying the panel's recommendations to the Fall '21 data from our kindergarten teachers around the state. But this is for the language and literacy domain, just to give you another example. And you can see here, on the bottom left, for example, notices and discriminates rhyme. It was, you know, 56, 57% of children were demonstrated or beyond, as opposed to 43% still developing that skill. And so it's a little bit different pattern for the language and literacy and for social and emotion. Can go down, let's look quickly at cognitive and math. And I'll just give an example, for example, the upper right here shows counting skills. And here, we can see that it's about a 70/30 split. So about 70% of children were rated demonstrating or beyond by their kindergarten teacher, but still a little bit more than 30% were rated by their kindergarten teacher at the 60th day, is having still the need to develop some of those skills that we would expect of incoming kindergartners. Okay, we can go down to the next one. So then, after the first five panels, which were oriented towards specific developmental domains, then we conducted the panel six, which is the final panel, and using the Modified Angoff Method. And here, we had the largest panel of experts, a few of whom actually had participated in earlier panels. So we had 16 folks this time. And the intent of the panel was to generate a composite cut score. In other words, a cut score not just at the individual progression level, but across the 14 progressions. So the panelists were presented with the recommended cut scores at the level of each item from the first panels, and they were given the results like we just looked at. And then they were asked to estimate or approximate what percentage of children they believe would be rated by their teacher within the demonstrating or beyond range for each of the items. And then there's a statistical process, you go through a standard process, that synthesizes all that information into an overall cut score recommendation. So in other words, they were dealing with the aggregate level across the 14, not the level of the individual progression like the previous panels. So we can go to the next slide. So how does this work? Well, they were asked to think of a child that is expected to meet kindergarten standards by the end of the kindergarten year. And they were asked to think of, of these children, what percent do you expect will be rated by their teacher in the demonstrating or beyond category each item by the end of the year? Go to the next one. And combining all of their results from this process, again, they were thinking it across the 14, not at the individual progression level. Their consensus recommendation was that a child should be demonstrating or beyond in at least nine of the 14 progressions in order to be ready for kindergarten. That recommendation was then given to the staff of the Office of Early Learning. They have a bigger picture to think about than the experts do. And of course, we found that some of the teachers that were involved gave excellent input, but they were also probably somewhat influenced by what they saw during these past couple of COVID years, where it's been difficult for children to develop at the same rate in the social-emotional area as they have in the past, and perhaps in other areas as well. So the Office of Early Learning staff was, and our staff as well, were able to look back at previous pre-COVID years of data and kind of consider and kind of consider the big picture. And the ultimate recommendation was to go with a cut score of 10 of the 14. So any child with 10, 11, 12, 13, or 14 of the progressions where their teacher had rated them at least as developing or, I mean, at least as demonstrating, in other words, demonstrating or beyond, would be considered ready for kindergarten. And we support that recommendation. Again, we think that the panel, in some ways, was probably somewhat influenced by children maybe not demonstrating the same level of skills that they had been prior to COVID. And we want this process to result in recommendations that will outlive COVID. So I think that was a very good and wise decision that the Office of Early Learning made. We can go to the next slide. So a couple of special considerations. I've already mentioned a few of these and as we think about what all these results mean. The implementation of the North Carolina E-LI began in 2020, and that was a difficult year because of remote learning and even changing learning conditions, as you all know, for teachers to collect maybe the same richness of evidence or to observe children in the same number of social situations or learning contexts as they might in a non-COVID year. So we expect, as we move out of COVID, or we sure hope and pray we do, that the children will, I mean, the teachers will learn better how to implement, how to observe children, how to collect the right kind of evidences to use the measure properly. So really, the Fall of '21 was their first opportunity to observe many of the students. It was the first opportunity for many of the students to have full access to in-person learning. So again, we just have to temper our interpretations of these results a little bit by the fact that, you know, it was the first time, perhaps first in-person learning for some children when they came to kindergarten in the Fall of '21, not having had the same maybe in-person preschool experiences they might have had prior to COVID. So therefore, it's possible that the scores that we see are in some way not typical. We're not sure. We're going to continue this work and look at this in subsequent studies and continue to work with the Office of Early Learning next year to observe what happens with these data. So this is the result of using the cut score of 10. What would this mean for the school report card data? In other words, what would happen at the school level? So you can see that the green and blue bars show that approximately 56% of North Carolina elementary schools would have the majority of their children coming in ready. As you can see with the green bar, 34.4% of North Carolina elementary schools have 51 to 75% of the children in that ready category. And then 21.5% of North Carolina elementary schools would have 76 to 100% of their children ready. So this is a picture that's actually similar to what we saw in some ways prior to COVID. But it is important to note that there's still that 14.2% of North Carolina elementary schools with 25% or less of their incoming kindergartners considered ready by their kindergarten teachers. So this is kind of the statewide picture at the elementary school level. If you go to the next slide, we can look at what this means for children at the child level. So 52.9% of North Carolina incoming kindergartners, as rated by their teacher on this measure, scored 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 of the items in the demonstrating or beyond range. In other words, were considered ready by this method. And this is a number that's actually very similar to what we saw prior to COVID. It is using the slightly increased cut score that the Office of Early Learning set. This does, however, remind us that 17.4% of incoming kindergartners had zero to four of the progressions that gave them, where their teachers gave them ratings of, you know, demonstrating or beyond. So there's still, you know, there's still children that come in with substantial needs for additional support from their kindergarten teacher. We can go to the next slide. So where does this leave us? We're going to continue this work. As I mentioned, we're going to replicate this study for the 2022, 23 academic year. There will be some additional progressions, which we'll hear about later in the meeting, that will be added. So we'll need to continue the process. And I guess that's about it. There's a couple of other comments that I wanted to make just about. It's important for North Carolina teachers to continue to learn how to use the assessment. We'll probably see more valid and useful data as they do that and as training improves and so forth. And the cut score of 10, remember, is slightly above what the panels recommended, but we think that was somewhat of a COVID effect. And this appears to be a good way to adjust for that COVID effect. So if we have time, I'm happy to take any questions. And I'm sure Dan is as well.
Thank you, Dr. Lambert. Any questions, Ms. White?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation today and the information that was presented. I just want to clarify for better understanding. This is for all children, all kindergartners across the state? You did not disaggregate that data to compare students who were in a North Carolina pre-K program versus students that would be entering kindergarten that were not in a pre-K program?
Yes, that's correct. An excellent question. At this point, we do not have a readily available database that would give us that information about the type of preschool experience that children had or about the quality of that experience. However, having said that, you raise an excellent point. We are, one of the things that our center and the Office of Early Learning is going to be working on this summer is we will be receiving data from the North Carolina the NC pre-K program. And actually, in our center, we work heavily with mentoring NC pre-K teachers. And we will be receiving their data from what's called the Teaching Strategies GOLD instrument, which is a similar measure in the sense that these progressions that were used for the E-LI are components of the broader GOLD measure, which is used by NC pre-K. We will then at least be able to identify the children who attended NC pre-K once we get that dataset. And so we can look at that question. It's a very important question. And we can also look at how the ratings of North Carolina kindergarten teachers for those NC pre-K children compared to how their pre-K teacher rated them at the end of the four-year-old year.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm following just with a comment. I would hope that if we feel like that this metric and this cut score is a good evaluation tool for readiness, then it would be an appropriate measure for determining whether or not our North Carolina pre-K programs are indeed preparing students for kindergarten or if they're just providing daycare. And there's a strong difference between the two. And if we truly want our students entering kindergarten that are exiting our pre-K program, we want to make sure that those pre-K teachers have the standards and the checklist. Otherwise, we need to really look back at what our pre-K programs are doing if they're not getting our students ready to learn as they enter kindergarten as five years. Thank you.
Yeah, certainly an important point. I just want to make one comment about that. I think it would be important to use data such as these as a part of that kind of evaluation or decision. But you would also want to make sure you did something that was not just about the opinions of kindergarten teachers, but had some other measures as well. You know, you would want to make that a comprehensive look at the effectiveness of NC pre-K. And you know, Frank Porter Graham and others have looked at this issue with a range of measures, not just the opinion of kindergarten teachers. But yes, you raise some excellent points.
And one final question, and they know that I beat this drum. The parent and the family is the most important partner in readiness or any caring adult. And over a year, I think it was probably before COVID, we worked hard to develop a list of readiness skills and getting that disseminated throughout the public so that throughout North Carolina, so that folks would understand what students have to know in order to be ready for kindergarten. And so better equipping that most important partner, it will be our most effective tool, whether that's a parent or a grandparent or a caring adult or foster parent, letting folks know what children need to know before they enter kindergarten. But thank you for your presentation today.
Certainly, yes. No, excellent comment. Just a couple of things about that. I'm looking forward to looking at the spring of NC pre-K data to see how our children are doing on those readiness goals that you mentioned. And also, the system they're using, the GOLD assessment system, allows parents to enter the system and look at how the teacher is rating children and also supply evidences from home if they're interested. So we hope over time, the NC pre-K program will learn to work better with parents and engage them in the process of assessing the children and help them to understand more about how the children are doing and even encourage them to go into the system and enter examples of work from home and things the children do at home. It's an excellent point, the jury is.
We'll look forward to hearing from you in the future, Dr. Lambert, as you continue this work.
Very good.
We're not done yet. Dr. Ochs.
Any other questions for me? I'm happy to do whatever is needed.
Thank you very much. Just a very quick question. These data are so, so important for a variety of reasons. And I'm thinking right now, I wonder, maybe you've answered this in your presentation or alluded to it. I wonder if these data follow on into, let's say, on into first grade, for instance, and can inform the teacher at kindergarten and first grade about, you know, where to begin to get the students, where they need to be in these areas, in the criteria that are part of the study. I think, I mean, it's just good stuff that all teachers in, you know, K-3 need to have. The other question is to do with the study. I think UNC Charlotte's going to replicate the study. So is that, do you know the extent to which, will it be a regional study or a Charlotte-Mc study?
No, we're going to engage statewide again. When we replicate this study, we will be using all expert opinions from teachers and their administrators and some subject matter experts from all across the state, from all eight regions. So we will probably use pretty much the same method. Now, I should tell you too, however, there will be, with respect to your question about the ongoing use of data like these, we will be piloting a program where some teachers in select districts will be continuing to use the measure throughout the year, not just at the 60th day, and see how that goes. And if that is, in fact, yielding important data that then could be passed on to the first grade teacher. So that's a, you're preaching to the choir on that issue, certainly.
One more comment, Superintendent Truitt.
Yeah, it is a comment. Thank you so much. To piggyback off of Ms. White's comments regarding the importance of parent partnerships, not all children go to NC pre-K and not all children go to daycare. And many children from all socioeconomic backgrounds are home with a caregiver or a parent. And I had a kindergarten teacher tell me once, and I realize this is anecdotal, but she said, and she's in a non-Titel 1 school. She said that oftentimes, there is a vast difference in the ability, for example, of children to cut using scissors, whether or not they've been to daycare or pre-K. So there are lots of kids who are at home with mom or dad or a caregiver who, just for whatever reason, don't come into kindergarten knowing how to cut or hold a pencil or, I guess my point is that the variety of skill sets for any group of incoming kindergartners is vast. And I would love for us to find a way to communicate this to all parents.
As a former kindergarten teacher myself, I can say of all the years that I taught kindergarten that you could never make assumptions about what skills a child might have based on what they experienced prior to entering kindergarten.
Exactly. Very well said.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Lambert. Thank you, Mr. Taker.
Thank you. I'll return shortly with another agenda item related to.
As we just heard, we are coming back to the early learning inventory with some post-changes separate from this work. So you will be hearing about this again in a few minutes. Another item of new business is the K-12 Science and Healthful Living Standards update. Dr. Day. And just a quick look at what has happened over the last month.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Truitt. Just a quick introduction. I think this is my first time before you. I'm Dr. Charles Aiken. I'm the new section chief for Science, Mathematics, and STEM. And while I'm here, I do want to give a quick thank you in confidence to both Dr. Day and Dr. Hemple Joseph, who hired me and allowed me to be a part of this team. So thank you to both of them. Dr. Essick and I are here today to provide the board an update. This will be the first of a series of monthly updates, just giving the board an idea of where we are in the revision and review process for both K-12 Science and K-12 Healthful Living Standards. Just want to start with a reminder to our audience and our stakeholders, just to reiterate that this process is very much guided by and comes directly from state board policy and the internal standards manual that was adopted by the board back in February. And specifically, the steps that we're going to be talking about and processes, if someone would like to look at, they come straight from pages 11 through 17 of the manual, which will go into far greater detail about each of these steps and stages. One thing we do want to reiterate in terms of K-12 Science and the K-12 Healthful Living Standards, we are using a hybrid approach due to the gap in time since the last point in which both these two sets of standards were actually being implemented. So we've kind of went through some things we've completed, some things that are in progress and some things that are coming up. In terms of science, we have spent a lot of our efforts right now on the communication front. We have been working with our chief academic officers, our listservs. And again, I do want to give a shout out both to Elaine Darby and Blair Rhodes. They have been instrumental in accessing the agency's social media avenues. But we have been getting all of the announcements, information out, stages and steps. We have been making sure that we now have created a part on the DPI website under the Academic Standards section for both Healthful Living and K-12 Science. And one of the required steps was to complete a research spreadsheet of all those pieces and data points that go into any standard adoption. And Science has recently completed that. We've been reaching out to our Institutes of Higher Education and a number of other groups that we're trying to make sure that we get the word out for everybody.
And just a reminder to board members, when we talk about Healthful Living, we're talking about two sets of standards, health education and physical education. So they're actually two separate sets of standards that we'll be creating. And along with science, we've been doing a lot of communication over the last period of time and have completed a research spreadsheet as well. And because we're in a hybrid model, we've already completed the focus group. So we're a little bit ahead of Science on that one just because of our previous work.
So some things that are currently in progress. One is the establishing of a data review committee. Applications have been sent out and are currently coming back, as well as application for the standards writing teams. Those are two teams required under the manual. We've also released a standard-by-standard public survey for all stakeholders. Any stakeholder can go through that. They can respond to either one grade level, all 13 grade levels. It's entirely their choice. We have also released to our PSUs a survey process that they will use. Science actually has a meeting scheduled for Thursday with all of our science liaisons to just talk about that process process and make sure that all of our district contacts are also, uh, fully informed. Uh, we have completed the scheduling of all of our regional focus groups. And I also want to thank, uh, Mr. Machado, the Office of Charter Schools. We've been able to also schedule a focus group specific for our charters across the state.
And Healthful Living is in lockstep with Science on this one. We may be a few days prior or after them on some of the action items, but we are doing the same work. We are also scheduling, uh, which you'll see on the next slide, our, um, interviews at this point. So this is where we are. We're at this, in the next few days, weeks, we will be closing the review steps for the reviews for the data review committee and the writing teams and those applications. We'll also close the standard survey, uh, so that we'll be able to collect all that data on those surveys. And then for our team, we'll be scheduling the interviews and Science, it looks like, will be doing their focus group. So we're staying real, real close together on this work. And we're happy to entertain any questions that you all have.
I just, uh, am so excited to see this smooth and tight process in action. Um, a big shout out to the two of you and your teams, as well as Dr. Day and Dr. Hemple Joseph for, um, overseeing the implementation of the, the internal review manual. Um, I'm especially thankful to the comms team for ensuring that there's been a clear, um, and consistent opportunity for, um, um, the public to know what's happening throughout the process, um, that this has been made, um, clear on the website. And really appreciate having these dates in, in front of the board. Um, am I correct that you anticipate a first draft of standards in October? Is that correct to the board?
We will be starting the, uh, writing process in October. We actually are looking at having an orientation for the writers, um, roughly the second week of October for Science.
October 10th, I think is our start.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you so much for that clarification.
Any other questions? Thank you both, and we'll see you next.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, finally, uh, another item of new business, just a quick update, um, on the, uh, work of the Office of Learning Recovery. This time, uh, the Research and Recovery Roundup White Paper Series. I believe this was the first or second of these white papers on the estimates of additional time needed for recovery. Dr. Corn.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. So my name's Jenny Corn. I'm the Director of Research and Evaluation with the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration. Just wanted to provide a quick update to the board. We, um, and can we transition to the slide deck? That would probably be the best. Um, put together just a couple of slides for the board. Um, our office, as you all know, is kind of laser focused on evidence-based interventions, on using data to drive decisions that are being made at the state and at the local level around recovery. The, we have a great deal of resources right now from the federal government, but it is not all of the resources that we could use to support every single child. So we really want to think about how data and research can drive and make best use of the resources we have available. This is something that we've talked to this board about, um, over the past couple of months. Um, and as we think about, um, this work, North Carolina has really emerged as a national leader in the work of recovery because of the Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration, because there is a single group, a single group of staff and researchers focused on this work on behalf of the department, working with all the divisions and areas inside the agency, and then also doing a great deal of outreach to, um, our charter and our LEA leadership. And so as we think about the intent of this, it's really about being transparent, facilitating partnerships and coordinating the work between the agency, between the state agency and the PSUs on leveraging the, the dollars that we do have for ESAR. If you'll go to the next slide. Um, and so one of the ways that we wanted to make sure that we are maximizing use of the research funding that we've done and, um, kind of getting opportunities to continue to revisit that partnership, that initial partnership we presented on in March, um, that we did with the EVOs team at SAS, is we created this white paper series. If you'll go to the next slide. And the intent of it is to unpack that comprehensive report. You all saw it's like 23 different tables, very complicated statistical analysis, and wanting to make sure that both as an agency, inside the department, and in partnership with, um, leadership at the local level, that we were continuing to go back to that report and really try to unpack it, unpack a bunch of those big graphs that we, that we initially presented. We're also continuing our partnership with the EVOs team at SAS. We have a technical report due in December. So we've been spending a lot of time taking this report to the field, presenting to the region, to CAOs and superintendents, to principal roundtables. And one of the pieces of feedback that, that we continue to get and something that I, that I really is very meaningful to me is when we take the time to collect all this data and do all this analysis and we write a big report and it sits on a shelf, that doesn't help anybody. And so really trying to think about ways we can be proactive to, to get people using this data that we spent a great deal of money collecting, cleaning, analyzing, and making sure that our, the decisions we're making are based and driven in that data for North Carolina. If you'll go to the next slide. So we created this idea, this Research and Recovery Roundup Series that we're doing. So these are short practitioner-focused white papers, and this is our kind of draft topics and timeline for release, doing this in partnership with so many of the leaders you see behind me, um, across the agency. Um, and so the very first one we released was like a quick overview of the study, like two or three pages, kind of reminding everybody that was released in April. And continuing with our commitment to make sure that we are being as approachable and engaging with the public since there are so many stakeholders across the state who care so much about education and what's going on in our public schools, but don't have a PhD in statistics. When we make, when we make the data unapproachable and ununderstandable to them, they, they tend to think that, that we're, that we're not being as clear as we can. And so what we decided to do, based on some national work that had gone on, was take those effect sizes and the estimates that we presented to you all in March and shared across the state, and translate that into months, into time, so that parents and teachers and principals could really understand the significant moment in time that this pandemic has created in a way that is digestible and understandable to them. And so that's, that's what we're going to present on today. I'm going to ask, um, we have a, one of our research analysts did an enormous amount of work on the statistics of this. Um, and so he's going to be coming up in just a moment and presenting that. But did you, want you all to see that this is, this white paper series will continue throughout the year as new topics come up from this board, from partners that we have in the districts and say, there is a critical issue around, and just one example, this literacy and broadband in looking at the rural, the rural urban divide, um, looking at the, you saw that, um, one of the charts was around the male, female differences in math. So taking, like really kind of unpacking that, looking at the data and then making, using the literature, the most current literature to give recommendations to our superintendents and our principals and our CAOs about what they can do to address this at the local level. Um, and so if you'll go to the next slide. So again, just kind of taking you back to that, that big report we released in March, the way that we did it is we presented those two big graphs where you were looking at the snapshot from 2018, the snapshot from 2021, but it was all presented in effect sizes. If you'll go to the next slide. And so, and we even tried to give some like parameters. We were like, this is, this effect size less than point oh five is small. Some of this like modern interpretation of it, but it's still, it's still off-putting to the, you know, to folks that, that aren't well-versed in statistics and research. So as we reflected about how can we make this information understandable and actionable for the general public, where we came to, and if we'll transition to the next slide, I'll invite, um, Mr. Kalen Clifton up to walk you guys through the analysis that he did and the summary, um, that was presented, um, in this white paper that was just released.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Kalen Clifton, Research Analyst, Office of Learning Recovery and Acceleration. Uh, first, I'm just going to, uh, briefly pause before I walk through, uh, my talking points here, just to allow everyone to take a second to look at the graph, uh, in the event that you have not, um, seen it yet. Just to familiarize yourself with that and be able to listen to the, the points as I walk through them. All right. So again, just a few talking points. I'm going to go through them and then I'll, um, be glad to field any questions you might have. Uh, first, these conversions are approximations and should not be taken as exact. They are strictly intended to help audiences understand the magnitude of student need and to facilitate meaningful recovery-focused dialogue between all members of the community, aiming to shape student experiences in a way commensurate with student need. First, I want to point out that by additional, we do mean that something must be added. These estimates should not be taken to mean, for example, that students in early grades, ER, uh, ELA are already caught up simply because a few months have passed since spring 2021. These estimates are also in school months, not calendar months. A school year is roughly nine months, while a calendar month is 12. In this case, we should not confuse the two and think that 12 months of additional time is equal to one school year. It's also important to note that these estimates capture student need at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year. Therefore, they do not reflect the effects of anything that happened during the 2021, 2022 school year. Just a bit on the method here. Converting test score differences to units of school time has become common during the pandemic. Most recently, a team from Harvard, the American Institutes for Research, and NWEA used national data from the MAP assessment to estimate weeks of learning. You may have seen that, uh, study on the news lately. It's been pretty hot profile, uh, covered widely on primetime TV on CNN and Fox News. Another team from Ohio State, uh, who we've spoken with several times, uses the same conversion as OLR to estimate the pandemic's effects in Ohio. The math here is pretty straightforward. Once you have the effect sizes, which we published back in March, uh, there are two steps which are similar to what you might see in a middle school math course. If you've got some questions there, I'll, uh, field that during Q and A. Uh, turning now to the graph, estimates are rounded to the nearest quarter of a month so that readers can interpret the fractional parts as weeks of school time. Looking at the graph, you can see that given a nine-month school year, estimates of additional school time necessary for recovery at the end of the 2020, 21 school year range from two months and one week in ELA grade three and one year, six months and one week in Math 1. In ELA grade three, that's about the same as the time between the beginning of the school year and the start of November. In Math 1, that's about the same as the time between the beginning of the school year and the start of spring break in the next school year. To summarize the graph, on average, students may now need interventions that are equivalent to twice as much additional time in Math than in ELA. For example, the average student who completed ELA grade eight and Math grade eight during the 2020, 21 school year might expect recovery after participating in interventions that generate gains equivalent to an additional two-thirds of a school year in ELA and about one and a half additional school years in Math. Remember that these estimates are intended to reflect student need at the end of the 2020, 21 school year. Therefore, they do not reflect any efforts that have occurred between the end of that school year and today. Furthermore, most students progress to the next grade in 2021, 2022. If the average fourth grader needed seven months to, seven additional months to recover at the end of the 2020, 21 school year, then we might expect that without intervention, the average fifth grader needed experiences equivalent to seven additional months to recover by the end of the 2021, 2022 school year. Without intervention, furthermore, students will carry these needs into adulthood. Uh, for more details, I encourage you to, uh, reference the blog, which is linked on the OLR website. And at this time, I'm glad to field any questions that we may have.
One quick question on this data. Is, are the districts receiving this for, does that data, I mean, no?
No. We, this is just the only summary that we've done like this for months, is statewide data. Um, we will be working with them this summer in person, on-site, using their data and having conversations with them. They've got, um, the access to a district level report that parallels that state level one, but this, this month's estimate. And part of that has to do with some of the confidence you have when you start getting smaller and smaller N sizes, um, as a reason for not, for really keeping it statewide and also not breaking this data down by, by student groups. And I, I will say that the complexity of these estimates has to do with how quickly, um, like learning growth is for, for students at early grades and different content areas. Because they, as you guys know, as educators, they really learn at different pace. Like early grades reading, I mean, the, the slope is so steep with how quickly they're learning an enormous amount of information, whereas when you get into like complicate, you know, so, so that's why it took us some time to do some, you know, to calculate this with, but we have a lot of confidence in these numbers. Kalen worked really closely with, there's a couple faculty at NC State. We had a lot of consultations with the Harvard folks and Ohio State. So other states are doing this and nationally, this is being done.
Questions for either one of our presenters?
I have a quick question. This is very fascinating. And I heard you mention recover, my question that keeps roaming around in my brain has to do with how, how do we define recovery? And I heard you say just a moment ago that it's recovery based on the average learner, something like that. I may be using the wrong terminology, but I guess here's my, let me see if I can get this out clearly. I'm thinking of a student, let's say, based on EOG or, yeah, EOG, doesn't matter. Let's say a sixth grader who is, um, not on grade level. And let's say the, the student is way off grade level, I know it's vague, in terms of reading or math. So how do we apply this, this concept of recovery to a student who is already not on grade level to determine that student's level or rate of recovery? So I, I, what I'm getting confused in my mind is the student who is already off grade level, not as a result of the pandemic, but pre-pandemic.
Yes, we, we could have done, as a state, we could have looked at stuff like this based on, um, growth estimates. So students predicted versus actual scores despite the pandemic. We could have estimated, and teachers, I think, know this, when the child comes into their class, how many months behind they are in the individual student. This is against a statewide snapshot to really try to understand the, the, the critical, like the, the crisis that some of our, some of our students, and these are, these are not, all students are not this far behind. These are statewide averages. And it's not to say that a student who is behind in math is also behind in ELA. Like there, there's difference, differential impacts there. I think where, where Kalen and, and I have really been, in the whole office, trying to get people to think about how they can identify interventions, evidence-based interventions that help students kind of make up some of these effects based on what, you know, based on the particular intervention. And really, you know, we've had a lot of questions from superintendents about drilling all the way down to like the standards level. Like they, there's some, quite, you know, they have some hypotheses that where students really struggled was on particular math standards, not just math, you know? And so that for them, what would be, how they're looking at their own data is drilling much more closely to the individual kind of standard level, um, data.
And again, they have the data, just not in, not with this particular translation in their next step. So, yes, Superintendent.
Just a plug for competency-based learning. If we had, for example, math standards translated into competencies, then they would be able to dig down and see where those deficiencies are per child. Can you share with the board briefly what's going to happen July 12th and 13th, please?
Yes.
I think that could give them the.
Sorry, sorry.
And, and, and we'll, we'll wrap this up as we are.
Thank, thank you. Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, I got it.
Nope. Okay. There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. So one of the questions again that, that we've been, and some of the conversations we've been having with local leaders and here at the agency is the, so what? What do we do now that we know this? Um, how can we help and support our districts and our charters to address this, you know, address these, this learning loss that we've had, the impact of the pandemic? So this summer, our office will be, um, supporting, um, districts as they roll out summer bridge academies and career accelerator programs. And then in July, we're going to be bringing all of the charters and all of the districts for a strategic planning event in partnership with the EVOs team at SAS. We are going to be, um, so there'll be leadership from the agency, from across different divisions in the agency, on-site with teams of district leadership and teams of charter. onsite with teams of district leadership and teams of charter leaders to talk about their data, their EVOS data, their other data that we've shared with them, data that they have access to, to help guide at the local level and identify evidence-based practices. It's about data use to, to identify evidence-based practices for interventions for recovery. So, we'll be doing that this summer. We're very excited. We just sent the Save the Data out to the districts and the charters about that. We also will be in response to some of this data. OLR will be rolling out a math enrichment program for fall. We'll be releasing that and talking about that this summer with, for, for things to kick off in the fall. We're also going to do another round of the career accelerator programs. And then also, we've got some new, we're using the state reserve allotment that we had for additional staff to hire folks whose entire role is helping local districts think about the use of their 20% of their ESR funds for recovery and how data can help, data and research can help them make those decisions at the local level.
Wonderful. Perfect. Thank you both so much. If there are no further questions, we'll move on to our actions on, action on first read. Thank you all. So, we just had three really interesting conversations, but it has put us a little bit behind. So, I will ask, as we move through some of these items, I'll ask for our presenters to keep it as concise as they possibly can. We have two action on first reads. SLA I is the State Advisory Council on Indian Education, or SACE. Nominees for membership. I think this is Dr. Su...
Good morning, Chairman Davis, Superintendent Truitt, and Vice Chair Duncan, members of SACE, colleagues, and all of our public who's attending. Fairly straightforward item today. Today, you have the nominees for the State Advisory Council for Indian Education. Just a reminder, this is a two-step process. First, nominees are sent over from the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs. They have approved five members for approval, four of which will be new appointments for a two-year term, one of which will be a reappointment, and those members serve in either educator roles or parent roles based on outline, what's outlined in the legislation in terms of membership. So, we have coming before you today, Angelique Young from the Kohairi Tribe and Jeremiah Moore from the Lumbee Tribe, who will be serving in educator roles, Calvin Locklear and Stacy Lynch, one from Triangle Native Association, and the other from the Hollowasapiyoni Tribe, who will be serving in a parent role. And we have for reappointment, Mr. Rodney Jackson, who will serve as the Title VI representative, who is currently coordinator for Title VI Program Services in Cumberland County. So, the request is that the State Board approve those nominees that have been sent over from the North Carolina Commission of Indian Affairs for a two-year term.
Thank you. Any questions on these nominees? Again, that will be action on first read.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SLA II, very similar. We've got some State Board appointments to the Council on Educational Services for Exceptional Children. Ms. Thomas.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Superintendent, and Board members. I'll try to make this very quick. We do have, back this month, we, you approved some appointees last month that were State Board appointees. Today, we have two appointments from the Governor's Office. One is the private school representative, and that, there is an error in your documents. You should have an updated executive summary later today. That's been sent to you, Lou. We just got names switched, and I apologize. The new appointee is Linda McDonough, and the individual with disability is a reappointment for a second term, and that is Matthew Potter.
Any questions for Ms. Thomas?
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
We have three action items. SLA III is back to Stacy. We heard last month from Dr. Locklear, a lengthy report on their, on their annual report to us. I don't know, have you, any changes to what we've, what we heard last month?
Good morning. Again, no changes unless there are any requests from the Board at this time. Stacy's request on behalf of Chairwoman Locklear would be that the Board approve the report with that one recommendation that we set forward.
Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. SLA IV is a proposed new State Board of Education policy local testing report. Dr. Howard, again, we heard this last month. It's a fairly simple certification.
Yes, thank you, and good morning, and there are no changes and no input from the field. Thank you.
And finally, again, from last month, SLA V, the Career Technical Education Course Inventory and Essential Standards. Now, is Ms. Lemay, and any changes there?
No changes, and we received no questions.
Again, this is the, the regular update that we do based on the, on the content of these particular standards.
Yes.
No questions? Thank you, Ms. Lemay. Three discussion items. Policy Amendment to KNEC-017, the North Carolina Learning Inventory, Early Learning Inventory, which we heard about from Mr. Tato previously, and he is back to talk about some changes.
Good morning again. The, thank you, this slide. So, a foundational component of early literacy learning is print concepts or knowledge of, of print. It is also a part of the standard course of study for kindergarten, as well as the Early Learning and Development Standards, and is taught and addressed in pre-K and kindergarten. However, we no longer measure those skills with state assessments. And so, to, to rectify that or to address that, what we are proposing is that we add two items to the North Carolina Early Learning Inventory. Both of these include skills that, that are part of the curriculum and that kindergarten teachers are accustomed to observing and paying attention to and, and providing instruction for. On the next slide, it shows the alignment between the Early Learning and Development Standards for older preschoolers, as well as the kindergarten standard course of study. And so, you'll see on the list of, of skills assessed there in the center column, you'll see that there's an alignment between what is, what we're widely held expected of, of older preschoolers, as well as the alignment with kindergarten. In order to add these two items to the North Carolina Inventory, we propose a policy update to KNEC-017. It would change the total number of progressions within the assessment from 14 to 16, adding two additional to the literacy component for print concepts. And then it would also change the subset of progressions that we would ask kindergarten teachers to observe for within the first 30 days from seven to nine. So, again, adding two additional literacy items related to print concepts. That's it.
And I presume that once, once this change is effective, and it will then affect the work that Dr. Lambert will have to, will have to go back to the...
That is correct. So, when, when they, the next iteration of the interpretation panel, they would include those two additional items, yes.
Any questions on this from Mr. Kujtav? Given the work that we're doing in, in, in reading in the state, this is a very logical change, and I think we all are well aware of the need for this. So, thank you so much, Mr. Kujtav.
Thank you.
SLA VII is another policy amendment to KNEC-003, Read to Achieve Alternative Assessment and Twice-Retained Definition. Ms. Parrish?
Good morning. The Office of Early Learning comes before the State Board today to present an update to the State Board policy KNEC-003. Our goal is to update the alternative assessment language to align with the new legislation and clearly define twice-retained students to, to support districts in their work. You have been provided with a strike-through version of the Senate Bill 387, Section 9, including the updated language that removes multiple alternative assessments to one alternative assessment. The final selection will be made, shared with the State Board by the 22-23 school year, but we're currently still in the blackout process. One key thing to note is that charter schools may continue to submit to the State Board of Education alternative assessments of their choice for review by June 30th of each school year. The charter school, as well as the LEA, will be responsible for any alternative assessment that is approved by the State Board. Senate Bill 387 does not clearly define twice-retained, so we are wanting to, in effort, to clearly define what twice-retained means and to help there to be consistency across the state. We met with stakeholders to discuss the current definition and proposed a definition to provide clarity to all PSU's. Stakeholder feedback, including 10 districts, NCDPI, OEL, IABs, and academic standards met to discuss this. All stakeholders unanimously agreed to the updated definition for twice-retained. The goal is to include all K3 students for identification for twice-retained as funds become available. Based on our current funds, beginning the 22-23 school year, twice-retained will include students that have been retained in second grade and then again in third grade. We will continue to monitor and extend funds to meet the goal to include in upcoming years, a student that was retained in first grade and then again in third grade, and then a student that was retained in kindergarten and then again third grade. So, we will continue to monitor that, and as funds become available, our goal is to include all of those students. But for this upcoming year, we are proposing the twice-retained definition that you see on the screen above, which includes a student that was retained in second grade or third grade. Again, those students would then be identified as twice-retained, and according to legislations, those students are giving funds so that they can be provided with supplemental tutoring to support them in their needs. Are there any questions?
And that's the funding need that you referred to, that we have right now, just enough for...
Exactly. Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Duncan.
How many students do we have statewide that retain statewide, whether twice by third grade, whether it be K first grade, second grade, or third grade twice? How many students do we have?
I believe this year, that number was actually lower than what had been in previous year, and if I'm not mistaken, it was around 80 this year. 180. Thank you. 180. So, I knew it was 80, so I'm sorry about that. 180.
That's just the twice-retained students. We'd have to get the numbers for any student who's been retained at all, kindergarten through third, that they've been twice-retained, which is third grade, and again in third grade, it was 180.
Okay, so I was asking a larger question than that. By the time we get students through third grade, whatever grade they've been retained in, how many have been retained at least twice?
We can get back and look at the numbers. We have a whole specific to that, yeah.
So, do we have a longer-term strategy for those students? I mean, the, the research would, well, it's fairly appalling about the, the success rate those students ultimately have, that they've been retained twice about in third grade. Do we have a longer-term vision or strategy other than the tutoring will be great, but it seems like there, there'd be a more lengthy plan needed to help these students?
Absolutely. That's, and that's what Tanya was saying, or Ms. Parrish. So, right now, we're just trying to be a little more proactive to add in our second grade and third grade based on funds. However, if you look at the new legislation, it talks about MTSS and that framework of being more proactive with those individual reading plans. So, the goal is to start looking at that more proactively, and we're working with the Office of Learning Recovery to even determine the effectiveness of twice-retained and the implications of that, could even look in at policy there and the policy change.
In fact, effectiveness of twice-retained, can you tell me what you mean by that phrase in this context?
So, I was, what we're trying to look at is students who have been retained twice in third grade, how are they now performing all the way through eighth grade, including those students? Has there been an impact on academics? Has there been an impact on behavior? Has it been a positive or a negative impact? Just to see if it is an effective pathway to, to consider looking at funding there, because we don't have any data to show how, how effective that's been.
Thank you.
Are you, are you collecting any data about, and I fully recognize that it's not until the third grade that testing would take place in a school setting, but are you using any information to help guide your, your practice about students with disabilities? And many, many times, it is very evident that the learning delay is because of a disability long before third grade. And so, to what degree does that either practical application or practical definition of a student with disabilities play into this data set? And then there, is there stacking of funding for additional tuning just because a student is behind, or funding that occurs because a student qualifies for additional services?
Right. So, what we're doing currently is we have worked with the EC Division, looking at the legislation around what that Section 6 talks about with the individual reading plan and looking at the difference there to, as the students are moving through the MTSS process, how quickly is that happening? And now, with new legislation, it starts as early as kindergarten, and that requirement of monitoring those individual reading plans and following up in the framework to be more proactive. Because that is, that honestly is some of the feedback that we got from our stakeholders that said, can we, a lot of this is a lot more effective if we can do it through our framework earlier, as opposed to being reactive.
Totally agree. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Ms. Ryan, do you need to stay up here? Or, Dr. Ryan, do you need to stay up here? All right. Finally, SLA VIII, the 2022-23 Read to Achieve Alternative Assessment Request for Proposal Update, and we just referred back to that alternative assessment in SLA VII. So, Dr. Ryan, anything to give us on this?
Absolutely. So, good morning. Officially, Chair Davis, Vice Chair Duncan, Superintendent Truitt, members of the Board, colleagues and stakeholders, thank you for your time as we discuss the outcomes for the 22-23 Read to Achieve Third Grade Alternative Assessment Request for Proposal. If you'll recall, SB 387 charges DPI to narrow the current list to one, as Ms. Parrish had shared earlier, and when we, but it was based on valid and reliable data. When we looked at the data, there was only one data point in 2018 that was collected, that was actually identifying the alternative assessments that we could even pull data from. So, we did the RFP. That was our, our next step, and that was going to be ready by 22-23. So, here, I would like to recognize the RFP team members, just their positions. It consisted of a dedicated group of professionals who were truly committed to the task before them and advocating for our educators and our students and families. The next slide shows the RFP timeline, where we met. During the first consensus meeting, we had evaluation criteria that we reviewed. During the second consensus meeting, a brief meeting was held alerting us of substantial concerns. And then at the final consensus meeting, an expert content members presented information for the team to consider about specific areas. And it was at this meeting that the team moved forward with a unanimous vote. On, only two vendors responded to the RFP. Upon completion of all reviews and presentations, unfortunately, no vendor from the current bid was selected to move forward. This was unanimous from all voting members. We'll discuss more in closed session, the specifics. And while this is certainly not the outcome we had hoped for, the evaluation team unanimously agrees it's necessary to cancel the current RFP and expedite a rebid. As a result, we'll begin the 22-23 school year with no approved third grade alternative assessment as a pathway option. However, we will continue with all the other options that we have currently, the statewide diagnostic assessment, the beginning-of-grade assessment, and all other good cause exemptions that are listed in legislation and policy. And while districts are not required to purchase an alternative assessment, we recognize they do prefer to add this option. So, our intent is to rebid the proposal and begin next steps. Actually, we started talking about that already, to have a final decision and recognize the urgency, and we'll continue to make it a priority.
And again, this is going to be an item for discussion in our closed session. Any questions for Dr. Ryan? All right. Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Chair Davis, that is the conclusion on the SLA committee.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. We'll now move to the Education, Innovation, and Charter Schools Committee chaired by Ms. Amy White. Ms. White?
Good morning, Chair Davis, listeners, fellow colleagues. We have a great agenda today for the Education, Innovation, and Charter School Committee. Ms. Jill Camnitz and I share a leadership role on that committee. Our first item for discussion today is EICS I. This is the relinquishment proposal from Learning Center Charter, which is a charter school, which has been operating in the state of North Carolina since 1997. It's a K9 charter school in Cherokee County, and Mr. Dave Machado is before us to explain particulars of this relinquishment request.
Thank you, Ms. White. As Ms. White said, this is a charter school that is in Murphy, which is in Cherokee County. It opened up in 1997, which is one of the very first years charter schools were in existence. It is K9 with 202 students. Their vote, their board voted last week to relinquish their charter effective June 30th, 2022. This is being done due to... This is being done due to financial difficulties and this is on the agenda for closed session to discuss more details.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Are there questions from board members or Mr. Machado at this time? Again, we'll have additional information provided in today's closed session. Hearing none, thank you for the closure of that item. Let's move to EICS 2. Today, board members, we have before us two reconsidered charter school applications. As you know, earlier in April, we approved all of the schools that were before us for recommendation from the Charter School Advisory Board, with the exception of these two schools, Greenville Preparatory Academy and Wayne STEM Academy. Wayne STEM Academy, there was a contract clause question about legacy impact capital and its role in the school. Mr. Machado will give us an update on that. And then Greenville Preparatory Academy board members had questions about its ability to meet diversity goals within that county and Mr. Machado has an update on those two. They are before us today with unanimous recommendation from CSAB for approval. Mr. Machado.
Thank you. Greenville Prep did come before CSAB at their May meeting. State Board of Ed had questioned their ability to meet their diversity goals. During that presentation, they did present additional data on how they can meet those goals. The school budget reflects an enrollment of 75% of students receiving free or reduced lunch. They are offering transportation, that they are implementing a weighted lottery. And this board, the Greenville Prep Academy Board, is a majority-minority board, so CSAB voted unanimously to recommend that this charter be approved. Wayne STEM came before CSAB again in May. State Board of Ed had some concerns that the Legacy Impact Capital had the ability to replace board members if the school was not in good standing. After much discussion, this was sent back to CSAB. Wayne STEM Board provided a new contract. And both the board and the school attorney were at CSAB meeting in May to discuss their new contract. Legacy Capital has a relationship with over 10 schools in North Carolina. They are a, their main function is development and capital for charter schools. They have developed some of our stronger schools throughout the state in building, developing their property, building their land, and financing the project. They currently are working with TMSA at their Apex expansion and Guilford Prep in Guilford County on that project. Legacy is not involved at all in the operation of the school and Legacy did assist the board, the Wayne STEM Board, to find people to help them in some of the operations of the school. They helped gather the people to do these projects, but they are not providing any of those services to this board. And you'll see that the board attorney, Lisa Gordon Stella, did provide a feedback from the attorney's letter from Wayne LEA explaining exactly what their role is in this application. CSAB is completely comfortable with this school and they are, again, recommending unanimously that this application be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Questions for Mr. Machado regarding this update? Mr. Duncan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Machado. As I look at the proposed new contract, particularly in paragraph 13, and I'm going to use an example subsection 2, and I think that's actually the subsection that had the provision previously in there that was against state law. It still has in there an ability where the charter school will retain, will return within 12 months to material compliance. There's some material non-compliance pointed out from the Office of Charter Schools. And it goes on to say it has the right to take over and resolve those issues without necessarily taking over the board. The issue with that, though, is it's not restricted to the facility. As you have described it and as it has been described by Legacy, their input is to development of the school facility. This clause is not restricted to the school facility. A reasonable reading, it could be interpreted to anything related to the school, including its academic program or anything else. So I don't think this is still fully resolved in terms of the potential for appearance that Legacy has the ability to have control beyond what would be permitted by the board or by law. As a follow-up to that, as to question last time, as you pointed out, as you have in here, the Legacy has many other contracts in North Carolina for other schools. Have we gone back and checked all of those contracts with respect to what the provisions are that Legacy has in there? And I say that in particular because the language that's used is just boilerplate. Is it boilerplate that are in other contracts that we have existing with charter schools in North Carolina? Have you been able to do, follow up on that request with that information?
Yes, sir. My team did look at every single contract that Legacy has been in with charter schools. There's only two active contracts that they have right now and that is with TMSA and Apex building their facility and Guilford Prep building their, expanding on their facility and that verbiage is not in their contracts. The other arrangements that they've had with other schools, those contracts have already been, the financing has already been provided and has been bonded out, so they are no longer the main finance person of these other schools. That is their model, to get a school through the development, open up, and have a short-term loan and then the school, once it becomes creditworthy, will try to bond out or get bank financing to pay them off and get longer-term financing.
All right, but there's still other clauses in here and I'm not going to take up undue time and then we're behind schedule. Give me cause for concern about the control issue when we move on to Greenville Prep. And that one still does, it has not resolved my concern, which you have said. But on Greenville Prep, I'm a little, I'm interested in understanding better. Greenville Prep's going to ask for weighted lottery, but I thought you said that their sign-up is projected to be 75% students on free or reduced lunch. Maybe I didn't understand that correctly.
Their budget reflects, that their budget can support 75% of their students receiving free or reduced lunch. That is what their budget reflects and their ability to do that. Their weighted lottery, and they are having, they will have a weighted lottery that will help them attain their goal. The goal is not setting 5%, but their budget will support setting 5%.
What is the goal?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information, but I will certainly get it to you when we come back after lunch.
Thank you. One last comment on both of these. Increasingly, it's become, and this is not a new phenomenon, it's an ongoing phenomenon, that charter schools will make public commentary in and applications about traditional public schools. We have jurisdiction over both charter schools and traditional public schools as public schools. And in that role, it's disturbing when we have comments that are negative or highly critical from one party that is charter schools against another, or if the reverse is occurring. It particularly gives me some concern when in applications, that type of commentary is occurring and it's not fully accurate. And I think in both of the applications here, if we looked at the initial applications, some of that commentary was not fully accurate and I think that's been determined as we've looked at it. That's disturbing to me and I think we need to at some point start to make some requirements that if you make a change or you put something in an application that's not accurate about another public school or a public school district, and you're using that as a basis to try to get, and hear an application approved, that it is important that we consider that because we are looking to a trust relationship long-term with these charter schools and that trust relationship needs to begin on a basis of trust. So that's the comment that I would add and that applies, I think, to both of these applications from their initial efforts. Thank you.
We've had that exact conversation, if I may, in our office and with CSAB leadership. Number one, in our training for applications, we are stressing when you are trying to articulate your reason why you want to put a school in a certain area, the most, what has happened in the past is they just, they look at the data of the local LEA. We have told them that that should not be the predominant reason you want to move into an area. So that is part of our training now to tell them that that's not serving anybody if we want to have a good relationship with traditional schools and public charter schools. So the point's well taken. We are telling our applicants during training that that is not a wise move and we are always looking for things that are inaccurate and we certainly want to address those things. Thank you for your comment.
Well, Ms. White, I would add that the same, the exact same scenario that you're describing occurred with advocates from the public school of one of these counties in a letter that we received that contained many inaccuracies. So we absolutely need to make sure that there is clarity and accurate information on both sides of this conversation.
And sometimes making public data more public can be perceived as negative. And unfortunately, in one of these applications, data about school performance that might not have been readily known or at the fingertips of those became public and it could have been perceived that schools weren't doing the very best job on behalf of students. And we cannot control that data and any perceived, any person moving into any county has a chance to go use their fingertips to access school data. So sometimes we are not in control of how that data is perceived, used, what picture it paints on any number of the spectrum that, anything that we measure through the Department of Public Instruction. So it's a two-edged sword, it goes both ways, but point well taken.
Thank you. If I could just say briefly, I did say it goes both ways when I made my comments, that that shouldn't happen with respect to traditional public schools, charter schools. I have experienced that over time and certainly maybe I can only speak from my county in great detail, there's been a great deal of negative commentary used in order to promote the charter school. I don't think that's long-term benefit, and by negative, I don't mean just factual data, which I completely agree. Factual data is something one can discuss and should be discussed, but I think that's why I say it's important, the accuracy of what you put out there. The data is accurate, that's going to be part of an application, but I think the accuracy of the information provided is extremely important and that's my point. And it seems like Mr. Machado agrees with that.
Superintendent Truitt?
And I just want to make the point that you absolutely did say that and my point was that this cut both ways in this particular instance, that the two charter schools that the board is considering this time, that this happened on both sides, both in the district and the charter school application.
Thank you. Ms. Camnitz?
If I could just very quickly, I did express last month concerns about Greenville Prep and in a follow-up conversation with Mr. Machado and Dr. Turner, we talked about what Vice Chair Duncan has just, that concern that he has just expressed. And so I'm appreciative that that's being taken seriously and hope to see a change in the tenor and tone of the applications in the future.
Bringing this conversation to a closer, is there any other comments or questions from board members? Let's move then to EICS 3. The 2021 Charter School Annual Report was brought to us last month by Ms. Ashley Pacaro. She worked, did amazing work with her team and everyone that contributed to that report. I don't believe that there have been any changes. Is there anyone that has a question about last month's Charter School Annual Report? Okay, hearing none, thank you. That'll move to the JELOC. We've made the timeline, it goes June 15. EICS 4 is the merger and mission amendment request from Triad Math and Science Academy and Charlotte Education Foundation. I was notified yesterday by our legal team that some additional questions by our chair and vice chair about some of the contracts are, that request was made and our legal team is in the process of gathering all of that information and will present some information, hopefully to us tonight in closed session. But Mr. Machado, do you want to walk us again through the particulars of this particular request and the why and the workforce?
Okay, as you can remember, we're talking about four charter schools here. Triad Math and Science Academy's company is a nonprofit board that holds a charter for Triad Math and Science, which is in Cary, Triangle Math and Science Academy in Guilford County, and Math and Science Academy of Apex. And then we have the education, excuse me, the Charlotte Education Foundation is a nonprofit that holds a charter for Queen City STEM. These four schools have a very close relationship and using the exact same model. So they are requesting that they merge the three schools under Triad Math and Science Academy and the one school under Charlotte Education Foundation into one, not, they'll be managed by one, oversight by one nonprofit board. They're requesting the merger, to merge the two entities in one statewide board. This will provide more efficient services to all four schools. The board will oversee the superintendent and central office, which supports the schools as well as the four schools. Board membership will be proportionate to the school's population with a total of seven. The information does allow that to go up to, I think it is either 11 or 13 board members. Board will have seven committees representing the four schools to address issues that will come before the board. The central office will be funded by 5% of gross revenue of all four schools. The central office will provide all back office financing, professional development, legal, any office expenses, travel, and curriculum support. All four schools will be audited separately, as will, the central office will be audited separately. Any revenue that is left over at the end of the year from that 5% may be and should be and they intend to return it back to the school. So this central office is an organization of highly competent people that are going to handle all the finances of the school, all the HR, so each individual charter school doesn't have to pay somebody, either do it in-house or a third party. To me, this is an excellent example of better oversight and better management of these schools. Triangle Math and Science, I have met with these people multiple times since I've been here. These are highly qualified people that not only are educators, but they have hired some top-notch people to manage the finances of these schools too. There will be absolutely no co-mealing of funds from either of the schools. Each school will have a PNL that will support its expenses based on its own revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Absolutely understand the request from our chair and vice chair about making sure that these contracts have fidelity and given what we've been, recently been through with the closure of two charter schools and fiscal mismanagement, it's only prudent that we would provide the proper investigation to make sure that these contracts would provide exactly what they are requesting. They do, we'll have an update tonight, hopefully. Questions from board members about this request? Yes, Vice Chair Duncan?
So I agree with some of your comments that this is an important area to take a look at in terms of potential efficiencies and I'm interested in a couple of things in that regard. What are the total number of students for these four schools? Do you know?
I don't know that I can get that exact number. I would assume it's probably in the neighborhood of 2,500 students for these four schools.
Okay, and how many people would, I think you said last time it would be 18 people who would be employed by the central office?
Yes, 15 to 18. Yes, 15 to 18 people.
And you, you said it covers the financial operations of the school. Who, who else would be part of that 15 to 18 group?
The principals of each school are part of the central office also.
But they would be located in the school?
They'll be located in the school, but they will be part of the central office, as will the HR people, as will curriculum support people. Everything it takes to run a school will be part of that central office. That's where the 15 to 18 people will be. And in the documentation that they provided us, I think it listed almost all the people and what they did.
All right, very good. And I do appreciate the fact that legal's taking the time to review because of one concern here is that we do not want to have a conflict of interest situation arise. So I appreciate the time that's been taken on the front end to review it carefully. And I'll be interested to, to follow along if this passes by the board to see how this, how this works. I think that'd be very interesting, getting updated reports and how this is working. We in a number of school districts around the state have issues in terms of some of the central office leadership, including chief financial officers. And so that would make it interesting to follow this carefully.
As someone who ran a charter school for 15 years with 2,000 students, we basically had a central office for our, our two locations, but we didn't really call it a central office. But we had people that were providing those services for both campuses. So again, I can't emphasize enough that this is a very efficient model. So you can hire high caliber people if you have four schools helping pay for those people.
Chair Davis?
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Machado, did I hear right that the central office would be running separate books for each school? When you said no co-mingling of money?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so they're essentially running four separate accounting, one for each school?
That is correct. Each charter will have its own accounting system.
Okay. And what are the other services that this central office will provide? Well, let me just ask it this way. For whatever additional services that adding, providing, providing besides finance, will those also be four separate service streams?
Yeah, they'll, they'll share the same HR staff. They'll share the same academic coaches. They'll share the same people that, you know, again, the registrars, that sort of, those people will be, each school will have somebody at this home office, excuse me, the central office will have people that provide those services that will be paid through that 5%. Each school will not have its own, say, HR person or their own registrar. That'll all be done at their central office and they will share in the cost of that person.
Okay. I, I think this is a wonderful idea to explore. Is, is this being done anywhere else?
Yes, KIP is moving to that model. There's four KIP schools in North Carolina. You approved last year their, their ability to do that. The movement schools that are opening multiple schools are using this same model. They're, the movement group is not quite as advanced as TMSA or KIP at this point in the model. I don't want to say they're not as advanced competency-wise, but they're not quite at that point where they're ready to get approval for a central office.
Thank you, Ms. White.
And, and Charter One also has a central organization entity as well?
They do, but that, that is a EMO and a CMO. The difference between a CMO or EMO and what TMSA is doing is these are employees of the board and their central office. We're a management company. Those people provide those services are employees of the management company.
Sorry for the confusion. Thank you. Any other questions about this one? Okay, thank you so much for that. We'll move then to Old Mainstream Academy's request to implement a weighted lottery. Board members, if you'll remember, Old Mainstream is in Robinson County. It is a charter school that's serving grades, grades K through four. What we would want you to know is that the discussion that we had in our pre-committee meeting was that we strongly applaud this school's emphasis on recruiting additional economically disadvantaged students. And given the economically disadvantaged student population in Robinson County, we feel like that the 35% goal is a little bit low. So we would like to put before you on the recommendation that that goal, that you approve their request to implement a weighted lottery, but their, their goal will be 45%. Mr. Machado, do you want to talk about the particulars?
Sure. They are, this, they are in their first year of operation. They're currently serving K4, 200 students. They are approved for K8. They are participating in NC Access. Grant is, so as we all know, a weighted lottery is mandatory. They currently have an EDS population of 28.5 and their goal at this point is to be EDS population of 35% by 2023.
Thank you. Comments from board members?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. White. I absolutely support that. Those of us who know, definitely the agency consultants and professionals know the public, you know, Robinson County and the demographics of the county. It has, it hits all the bullets in terms of disadvantagement. And we have a char, two charter schools in fact, but the Old Mainstream is in the heart of Lumbee country. And I can't see, and it's going to be a fantastic school sooner versus later. I can't think of any reason why we can't get to 45% and do our very best work on coming out of that school for the kids who need that type of innovation. Hooray, 45%. You have my vote.
Questions, comments, other board members? Thank you for that affirmation. As the board member that represents that county got knocked down. So our, our request for approval tomorrow will reflect that change at 45% versus 35. Let's shift then to EICS VI. Oak Hill Charter Schools Request to Increase Its Enrollment. This is a new charter school and they are sharing students from multiple counties and they are before us with a very small request to add actually another kindergarten class. Mr. Machado, anything new about this request or something that you think that we need to know that would?
I just would like to emphasize that this, CSAB has entertained this type of motion before by new schools and, and they're very reluctant to approve that. But the fact that this is the only charter school in Caldwell County and one of the few charter schools in the four counties that are surrounding it, and the fact that they have a very robust waitlist, they felt like that this was a very reasonable request. And so they're just asking for one more section of kindergarten. They have already, and we'll talk about that in a minute when it comes to the RTO report, but they are ready to open up in August.
Questions? Okay, thank you. EICS VII is North Oak Academy's request for a second delay. This is the school in Durham County that has had its request for utilities to be denied by the county. And there were some pending court proceedings and a state law that no longer allows counties to deny access to utilities. Mr. Machado, what do you have to tell us about North Oak Academy?
Okay, this is a National Heritage Academy school. It was approved to open in fall of 2021. They're currently in their one, their one-year delay. They are approved to open K5. When they're built out, they'll be K8. They have identified the site that their facility is on. As soon as State Board gives them the approval to, for a second year delay and they finish their litigation, they will close on that property. As Ms. White said, Durham has prevented the school from accessing water and sewer. Current legislation prevents municipalities from providing, from prohibiting that. I want to emphasize too that if this second year delay is granted, when they open up in fall of August of 2023, they'll have three years left on their charter because they burnt or used two of them in their first and second year delay. If this school does not open on time, then they will have to withdraw and reapply again. If this school, if they have started the prop, the building and they're close to being finished and they have an alternative or contingency site, they will be allowed to move into that contingency site until this building is ready to move in. So the safeguard on approving this is if they don't make the, these numbers in this date, they will not be able to open. This is the last delay that they can request and they'll just have to reapply. Okay? In any school that is either in a one-year delay or a two-year delay, starting in June, they have to start providing our office with monthly updates. Where are you on your facility and permitting and things like that. So we keep a really close eye on the progress. And if there's going to be any issues, we would certainly bring it to CSAB and the State Board of Ed's attention.
Questions? Vice Chair Duncan?
Do we have an update on the status of the litigation? Apparently there's legal proceedings.
They anticipate this to be heard, they were hoping June, July, July or August. And they, they expect a ruling and then be able to hopefully in their favor and start building. That's the latest I've gotten from National Heritage Association when I asked that question.
Thank you. Any further questions? Terrific. All right. Then EICS VIII is our revitalized enrollment decrease request. Mr. Machado?
Okay, this is a school that's an accelerated application, which accelerated means you're going to open up the same year. You're going through your ready-to-open training. They were scheduled, they're scheduled to open in this August. They're approved K2. They will be K5, or excuse me, K6 when finished. The school came before CSAB and asked that their enrollment be reduced because they're struggling to get the amount of students that they need. CSAB voted unanimously not to grant that amendment request because when you apply for an accelerated application, you are stating right up front that you will have the students that you need and you will have the facility you need. And you don't have the ability to ask for a delay or lower your enrollment. So again, CSAB did unanimously vote not to grant that application or recommend that, that amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. So we'll also be talking about revitalized and the charter school ready to open preliminary recommendations. So that's a placeholder. Questions? I'll just, we'll, we'll take a pause on that. Let's go to EICS IX and then you may have an additional question as we discuss EICS X. EICS IX is Shining Rock Classical Academy's Request to Amend Its Mission Statement.
Okay, Shining Rock Classical Academy is located in Waynesville in Hayward County. It opened in 2015. Currently K9 with 520 students. They are approved to be K12. They, as a lot of our schools do, had a year-long strategic planning session, met with their board, met with several stakeholders, and they are changing their mission statement. It is not a deviation from their original mission, but just more clarity and less words. Again, CSAB unanimously recommending this be approved also.
And the, the new statements included in the executive summary, if you just want to take a look at that before we, it's a discussion item, so you have time to take a look at it. So then the last item is, excuse me, next to the last item. EICS X is the charter school ready to open preliminary recommendations. This proposal is always brought to us as forethought. They'll be back with the, the final recommendations next month, but gives us an opportunity to see, look, ask. Mr. Machado, tell us about the schools that are in the process and, and looking forward to opening.
Sure. Lou, do you have the PowerPoint? Okay, these are the schools that are, are currently in the ready-to-open process and will be opening up in August, this August, 2022. There are certain guidelines, steps that they should have, they should be approaching at this point. They, every one of these schools appeared before the charter school advisory board to give an, a update on where they are in their numbers and in their facility and their budget. And some of the schools are past the threshold. Some are still working hard to, to reach that. So again, these are the four things that, that they must be able to present to CSAB to move forward. It's a ready-to-open process. There, if, there's five ready-to-open training sessions that they've already completed. Next week, they will be here for a two-day training, again, on everything from opening schools, serving students with disability to cash management, just everything it takes to open up a charter school. And that'll be done on Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. We'll go to, the first school is American Leadership Academy in Johnston. They're, they're going to be located in Johnston County between Clayton and Smithfield. Year one, they'll be K10. And they're approved for 1,525 students. As the latest information we have, they have the 1,522 students, which equals 100% of their approved ADM. And they have close, over 891 students on their waitlist. Their facility is under construction right now and they anticipate getting their educational certificate of occupancy in early August. This is another situation that we will be monitoring very closely. They are coming for CSAP next week to give us an update on where they are in their facility. Next school is Central Carolina Academy Charter. This is a replication of Chatham Charter Academy, one of our oldest and most successful schools. This school is going to be located in Sanford in Lee County. Year one is going to be sixth grade through 10th grade. Their approved ADM is 282 students. As of May, they're, they have 244 students out of the 282, which equals 87%. They're, they have a waitlist of 56 students. Their facility, they purchased, I think it was a Kmart central op, home office that they are renovating. And they anticipate getting their educational certificate of occupancy in mid-August, at the latest end of August. They do have a contingency plan to move into the Wicker Center in Sanford if they have to for a week or two. The Wicker Center has, was used by another charter school a couple of years ago until their facility was complete. The next one is Movement Schools Southwest. This would be the third school that Movement has in, in Mecklenburg County. They're going to be, year one, they're going to be K1 with an approved ADM of 250 students. As of May, they have 179 students, which is 79% of their enrollment. So they do meet the 35% threshold. They are renovating a building and anticipate it being ready by end of July, early August. I have visited this building and I have all the confidence that it will be ready in time. Oak Hill Charter School, we talked about that a little earlier for the amendment to increase their enrollment by 24 students. They're going to be in Caldwell County. Year one will be K7. They're approved for 192 students. Hopefully they'll be approved for 216. They currently have 189 students in a row, which is 98% of their 216, or 87.5% of the 216 if you were to approve that. And they have 95 students on their waitlist. Their facility, they already have the educational certificate of occupancy. It is a, a building that Caldwell County School System used to have that they gave it to the Rotarians, who the Rotarians are allowing the, the school to meet there. Excellent building. I've visited this site also and they have already identified their leader and they are ready to open. The next one is Schools of the Arts for Boys Academy, Saba. If you remember, this is a single gender boy's school for arts. They have struggled to meet their enrollment and they are asking for a one-year delay, which our office can approve. So this school will not be moving forward to open in, in August. Wake Prep Academy. This is a school that was originally scheduled to open in Wake Forest area of Wake County. As you remember, they were allowed to move just across the county line into Franklin County. They are going to open up K12 with 620 students. Their May enrollment right now is 1,594 students. That's 98% of their estimated enrollment and they currently have 2,120 students on their waitlist. Their facility, they are renovating a existing building, which was, I believe, a call center for an insurance company. And they are very far along in having this building ready. Again, they anticipate their educational certificate of occupancy to be available in early to mid-August. And they are coming before CSAP next week to give us an update on that. And they are coming before CSAB next week to give us an update on that. Revitalized Charter School, this is a school that was going to open year one, K2. Approved ADM for 216 students. They currently have 79 students, which is 37%. At the CSAB meeting last week, special call meeting, this was brought up again and CSAB again voted no that they cannot reduce their estimated enrollment. So we have a feeling that this school will not be recommended to move forward. Triangle Math and Science Academy Apex, this year one, they're going to open up K5, 600 students. They currently have 600 students enrolled and 1,471 students on their waitlist. They are currently in a construction process. It's, I had traveled by there just the other day. They're hoping that it'll be ready by mid-August. If not, they will give us a contingency plan where they'll move until this building will be ready. And those are the ready-to-open schools that we are bringing before you. And again, we're, you will get, all these schools are appearing before CSAB next week. CSAB will make their final recommendation to the State Board of Ed, which we will present at your July meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rashado. And just for practice, it gives us the opportunity to look at those and not have them appear on the July agenda, which is a short agenda as action on first read. CSAB will do its job in making sure that all of the schools meet the criteria. The two that you heard today that are, have several metrics that have not been met are Saba and Revitalize. Questions from board members about the schools as they've been discussed today? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move forward to the last item on our agenda. Thank you, Mr. Rashado, for the Mr. Rashado Show today. EICS 11 is a submission for a restart application, which we have not had in a long time because we normally do that in cohorts. But Dr. Cynthia Martin is the Director of District and Regional Support. But today we have before us Ms. Julie Garber to walk us through Craven County's request. We did ask a lot of questions about this in our committee meeting. So Ms. Garber, we're excited to hear from you today.
Yes. Good morning, or good afternoon, excuse me.
Yeah.
Chairman Davis, Vice Chairman Duncan, Superintendent Truitt and board members. My name is Julie Garber and I serve as the Reform Model Lead in the Office of District and Regional Support. So as Ms. White shared, we do have a restart application before you. We always like to connect with you in your state board goals. And we have goal number two. We see that restart schools under Objective Seven in Component One have the goal of meeting or exceeding annual expected growth. So currently, for your context, we now have 153 restart schools across the state, as Ms. White mentioned, operating in cohorts, the earliest being in 2017, 2018. And so today we have before you from Craven County, a restart school. The restart school is JT Barber Elementary. They are requesting an implementation year. So a full implementation year in this coming year, '22, '23, and then, excuse me, planning and then implementation in the following. Craven County currently has two restart schools already. I am happy to share with you that one of them actually is already out of recurring low-performing status. So that's Roger Bell New Academy, New Tech Academy. And we do have, I believe, from working with them, a strong, we can see a strong district and school collaboration. According to the application, in the planning application, they do have to submit, and they do have to submit a budget before the implementation year. But during this year in review, they have to have signed off and assured that the CFO has worked in conjunction with the superintendent and reviewed the financial implication of this. So according to their signature, they have done that and we have done some work with our school finance director and communication as well. So if they are approved, we would have then 154 restart schools across the state. And I will be here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garber. Board members, I know that we have discussed at this table many times that we are anxious to have enough both qualitative and quantitative data to be able to evaluate whether or not restart is an effective reform model in our state. And so we are looking to a time in the future where we can bring some schools and look holistically at that program. COVID definitely prevented us from having access to good solid data. So and we are looking forward to having a time where we can reflect and further evaluate whether this is something that we think is just the pathway towards future success. Questions about Craven County? Yes, Vice Chair Duncan?
Really a follow-up to your comment, you mentioned one of the schools in Craven County has come out of recurring low performing?
Yes, sir. As of 1819. And with that designation that the legislator, legislation has said will be in place, right? So as of 1819, they were no longer recurring low performing. And then those designations stayed in place for the past years because we had no data.
All right, so that's helpful for me to understand because I was wondering what data we were relying on during the...
Yes, I apologize. I should have brought that context.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
No, Chair.
I believe I hear Mr. Hall. Hold on, Ms. Garber.
Thank you, ma'am. I just have a, for my permission, only a quick question. Can a school who removed themselves out of the status of restart, they found out a year or two later that they need to go back, does it prevent them from returning to restart status?
In terms of authorization, I believe you're asking. So if they have, if they have rescinded, so the eligibility, of course, is recurring low performing status.
Yes.
So that is the initial eligibility. And then any other applications would be brought to you?
Okay, so there's nothing that prevents them from asking for it a second time?
Not, not to my knowledge and policy.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I'm certainly happy to investigate.
I appreciate it.
Okay, hearing. No further questions or comments. Mr. Chair, that concludes our business for the day.
Thank you, Ms. White. We'll now take a break for lunch before we move to our afternoon session. We'll reconvene at 12:50, 12:50. It's lunchtime.
Getting ready to roll.
I know, I could tell.